One second, how about now? Does that you do not testing, testing?
To call this council meeting to order, would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Willie Brown, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please remain standing for a moment of prayer or silent meditation.
Councilman Holtz.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Michler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hanky.
President Dawson.
Present. Want to give time a minute here to catch your breath? All right, please remember to, council member to speak into your mic and ask the audience to make sure your phone is on airplane mode or silent mode. Minutes for approval, we have minutes of May 6, 2024 council meeting for approval. Can I get a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Got a motion by Mr. Fish, there's a second.
Second.
Mr. Hanky, a second?
No.
You didn't second, I need a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holtz.
There is a correction to be made, just, Mr. Bill Murray, I think it's the one, two, third sentence down, Bill is B.I.L.L., just a misspell.
No, he spells his B.I.L., he spells his name B.I.L.
Well, I take that back then.
He told me the story about that too, but he spells it B.I.L. Any others?
Bill Murray.
Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, presentations and introductions. We have a presentation today by Mr. John Hunzberger from the Elkhart County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
John Hunzberger, 115 South Michigan Street. I'm the executive director for the Elkhart County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Thank you very much on behalf of my board and commission. Want to thank you, council, if the mayor is here, I would thank him as well, as well as city staff who have participated in the quilt gardens. Many of you probably are aware of the quilt gardens. The quilt gardens have been around now, we've, we've been doing this project for over 17 years. Quilt gardens and quilt murals really are an expression, it's a love letter to visitors from our communities. It is a completely volunteer project in each of our communities. So this year we have 13 quilt gardens and 12 quilt murals. Again, those are completely volunteer based, they pick the quilt garden patterns, they select the flowers, they then come pick up the flowers and they plant them and then they water them and they weed them throughout the year. So we are incredibly thankful for those volunteers and the communities that support them in that work. So, the quilt gardens will be kicking off here, May 30th. Many, you may have already seen, the quilt garden in Central Park has already been planted by the city staff. And those really kick off through May 30th and go all the way out through the end of September. And it's also quite a prime time because this week is National Tourism Week. So it's a time that we kind of begin to talk about and promote, you know, why tourism is important and why is it valuable to our communities. So before you, many may see, there's a notebook. One of them has our, we believe in here, the other one is the well crafted, that is an Elkhart County brand. Inside of that, there is a pamphlet that we created to help maybe tell the story and explain a little bit more of why tourism matters. What is the benefit, what is the impact that tourism has on our communities? Has some important information about how we work with our communities, how we support and advocate our communities and that quality of place. As well as some economic impact numbers that we biannually do research to understand what tourism means and what is the economic impact and value to our communities. So that's also in that, that little flyer. Many of you are aware of the assets that we have in our communities. Not only, or you're, you're very familiar with Wellfield and the Lerner, obviously, but we also have the Beacon Health and Aquatic Center, the Midwest Museum of Arts. These are significant assets that, you know, are really a sense, the center of community pride, but those are also the unique assets that draw people from all over the nation to our community. Really does communicate our values and, and who we are. So we're very, very proud of that. We also want to communicate that Elkhart, Elkhart County is a year-round destination. We're not, we're not just having these activities and events during the warm season, which was, you know, normally the, the best time to get outside, but we also have these, these attractions also during the winter season. So we are seeing increased activity here in Elkhart County because of the investments by the public and the private sectors, which is drawing people in year-round, which is also very exciting. We at the CVB, knowing that tourism plays a vital role, we believe in supporting our local entrepreneurs or small businesses. And these are the, the individuals that really kind of build that quality of place, that becomes attractive, that really does encourage people and make it a desirable place to visit. We do tirelessly support these businesses and trying to elevate them with our marketing and communications programs. We believe that Elkhart County and Elkhart is a well-crafted community. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have about the quilt gardens, quilt murals, or anything that the CVB does.
Mr. Fish.
Thank you for being here, I'd just like to brag on the Elkhart Environmental Center being the first garden spot to complete their garden this year. Jeff Zavatsky, the staff, Maricor, and the volunteers. And also never forget to mention the Railroad Museum in your speech, but that's just me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a little bit, and I realize theoretically we are partners within our city, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then is it current that the innkeeper's tax that, that makes up your budget is 7%? Is that still correct?
No, it is 5%.
It's 5%?
Yes, sir.
And so we used to get a little bit of a budget overlay so we could trend. Indirectly, it lets us know the visitation to our local hotels, and since we've been building more, it would be interesting to see what impact that has had. Your, your budget would be a good measure of that, so to speak. One, there's available rentals, but two, how often are they rented? And it would be interesting to see the impact based on the innkeeper's tax. So I think that part, and then do you have any other matching state or federal dollars?
So, to your first point, happy to share any, any data information. Actually, our website does have all of the research that we collect, so all of that is public information. We often, even within our own industry, have been highlighted because of our transparency of the information that we have out there. Most communities, they, they wait for a FOIA, they wait for someone to come ask for it, but we put it out on our website, so, but I'd be happy to direct the specific information that you're requesting, absolutely.
And as, as a follow-up to that though, I'm not so much interested in how you spend your money. I'm interested in what impact we have made over time to tourism as a direct measure to the financial return.
Sure, and, and we, we do have those projections and those numbers.
Good, good.
The matching, you know, one that I would love to highlight is that our, we have been working with the City of Elkhart Redevelopment Commission for eight years, maybe nine years, where we've matched dollar for dollar to market and promote the density of businesses and attractions downtown. And we've not only been doing that for eight or nine years, dollar for dollar it has increased, but we've also been recognized in the state for successful campaign to, it's due downtown and it could be the gateway mile, it's back to due downtown, but we're really trying to be responsive to what's happening downtown. So we've, we've worked closely with the city on that, and we're very proud of that. And so that's, that's been pretty successful as far as matching.
So, so finally, if I'm allowed, it would be nice to see the bump in the peaks and valleys if it's monthly anyhow, because then the city tourism through Corinne could go back and say, what did we have going at the time that drew that many people? Now Jazz Fest and some of these things, we would understand, but to what level? And I would be interested in seeing at what measurable response, because we can always talk about 40,000 people came, but how much did they spend? What was the pushback to the community, right? And that's kind of what I'm after, is just to look at our calendar map by the tourism map that you would have and put those two together, would help us say what's working and what's not.
Mr. Michler.
Thank you, just two quick questions. Regarding the innkeeper tax, do you know if Airbnb's are required to pay into that, or is that just strictly for hotels?
So for Elkhart County, so it is, it is county by county how it is structured. For Elkhart County, we only collect innkeeper tax from hotels, motels of 30 rooms or more, and as long as it's less than a 30-day stay. So no Airbnb is, is collecting innkeeper tax. Also, no campgrounds are collecting innkeeper tax as well, so other communities may do that, they, they've done that from the establishment of their innkeeper tax rules, but Elkhart County does not.
Thank you, the other question was, well, more of a request, just to see the general tourism trends over the years. You know, I'm sure 2020 it was very low, in 2021 it probably spiked dramatically back up, but it would be good to see, you know, over a 10-year period, maybe what the trends are looking like.
Sure, we actually do have some of those trends in our annual business plan. Again, that's on our website, but I'd happily pull those out and send them directly to you, you can read through and see what those numbers are. Yeah, 2020 was like 50% cut, I mean, cut us out. We were the industry that was significantly impacted when it came to the, or the cares dollars, I mean, hospitality was the only industry that was identified. So it was significant, the rebound was also significant, but it was, you know, you have that pent-up appetite to get out and travel and be where you haven't been able to be, but I think it also demonstrated the value of those spaces and those places, right? So when you couldn't be at them, boy, we were excited to get back there to those spaces and be with our family and friends and that, in those environments. So I think it's just the criticalness of why we want to invest in these, these spaces, places, attractions, and events, because it is so, so important to us and being community and being, being vital, so.
Thank you, John, we appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. For full disclosure, I am a member of the CVB Board, and all those questions you asked are great questions because they have all that information. They have tons of information on how, why the tourist comes, how much they spend per, per family, how many nights do they stay? So that's, that's great information that helps us see the economic impact of tourism, which is astounding for Elkhart County. So thank you, John. Okay, reports of council committees? There are none. Ordinance on second and third reading, would you read this ordinance by title, please? Proposed orders 24-0-11.
Proposed ordinance 24-0-11, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3116 as amended entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing the Rules and Regulations for the Government of the Common Council, the City of Elkhart, Indiana and its Members to Add the Tax Abatement Committee as a Standing Committee of the Common Council."
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt this on second reading? Got a motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mr. Fish. Council discussion, Mr. Mishler.
Yes, I requested this resolu, or yes, this ordinance, excuse me, be created. We've had an ad hoc tax abatement committee for several years. This just seemed to be the logical step to formalize it, so it's in council rules.
Thank you. Mr. Hinky.
Yes and no, kind of. I think the ad hoc is because of the understanding piece, the time invested in getting it done. Seems as though the finance committee would be an appropriate place of finance members of impact of abatement. So we have yet another one strictly for abatements. To me, it's more like a sub-finance group. We're all, I think the same people are on the finance committee.
No, they're not.
Well, I know I am.
Yep, you're on every committee. Okay. Is there any others council discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn it to the council, I mean, to the audience, if anyone in the public would like to speak on this proposed ordinance. Seeing none, we'll turn it to the council. Anyone in the council discussion? Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Yes.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
No.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Can I get a motion for third and final?
Second.
Got a motion in second. Would you read this ordinance by title only, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-11, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3116 as amended entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing the Rules and Regulations for Government of the City of Elkhart, the City of Elkhart, Indiana and its Members to Add the Tax Abatement Committee as a Standing Committee of the Common Council." Councilman Holtz.
Yes.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one on third and final.
Thank you. There are no ordinances or resolutions referred to committees. Tabled ordinances, resolution will remain tabled. Ordinance 24-0-10 will remain tabled. Ordinance on first reading. Would you please read proposed ordinance 24-0-12 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-12, an ordinance appropriating $200,000 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund for Unexpected Repairs to the City of Elkhart Severe Weather Emergency Notification System.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Would you read proposed orders 24-0-13 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-13, an ordinance annexing certain real estate commonly known as Elkhart East areas D and F, intersection of County Road 17 and County Road 6, Elkhart, Indiana 46514, and declaring the same to be part of the City of Elkhart, Indiana.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Would you read proposed orders 24-0-14 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-14, an ordinance annexing certain real estate commonly known as Elkhart East area A, northwest corner of County Road 4 and County Road 17, Elkhart, Indiana 46514, and declaring the same to be part of the City of Elkhart, Indiana.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Would you read proposed orders 24-0-15 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-15, an ordinance appropriating $1,457,243.75 from the General Fund to other funds accounts and authorizing the controller to transfer the funds to the Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant Fund.
If there are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Proposed ordinance 24-0-16, would you read that by title only, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-16, an ordinance appropriating $3,300,000 from the Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant Fund for the 2024 grant-funded contract paving project under the Community Crossings Grant Program.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass that on to second reading. Would you read proposed orders 24-0-17 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-17, an ordinance appropriating $820,000 from the Greater Elkhart Fund for 2024 Aspire Elkhart Targeted Infrastructure Improvement Projects.
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
In reading the Greater Elkhart, the, it says Great Elkhart, actually, so I was going to question the legal name.
In the ordinance or in the title?
Well, I looked on the ordinance, and it doesn't list Great or Greater. As far as, it does say Great.
I don't know, I don't know if it's the title that's important or the number that...
Title on the ordinance would be correct. The title that I just read is incorrect.
Say again, please.
The agenda is incorrect?
Yes, the title on the agenda is incorrect. The title on the ordinance is correct. So it should be Great Elkhart Fund, or is it?
Great is the actual legal name of that fund?
That's what David's...
It used to be called Greater in the budget book.
It is the Greater Elkhart Fund.
Greater?
Greater.
So your ordinance needs to be...
So in ordinance 24-0-17, the title will have to be amended?
Got a motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
Got a motion in second. All of the favors amended to Greater, from Great to Greater, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And if there are no objections, we'll move this on to second reading. Resolution, proposed resolution 24-r-11. Would you read that by title only, please?
Proposed resolution 24-r-11, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, adopting a written fiscal plan to define a policy for the provisions of services to the area commonly known as the intersection of County Road 17 and County Road 6, Elkhart, Indiana 46514, a proposed annexation area.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt this resolution?
No, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mr. Fish. Mr. Huber.
Good evening, Mike Huber, Director of Villain Services, City of Elkhart. Tonight, we are looking at, as you, as you saw on the previous part of the agenda, we have two potential ordinances for annexation, both in the northeastern part of the city and what's commonly known as the Elkhart East area. The first annexation is area D and F. Tonight, I'm here just to talk a little bit about the fiscal plan. This resolution would adopt the fiscal plan, and then we would follow up with a presentation from the developer and consideration of the ordinance at the next council meeting. This annexation is contiguous to the City of Elkhart. It exceeds the 12.5% contiguity requirements of the statute. It's about 195 acres. It's 39 separate parcels. It includes the fully developed built-out area of Elkhart East that's on the south side of County Road 6 and on the west side of County Road 17. It also includes undeveloped land on the east side of County Road 17 and in the northeast corner of 17 and 6. The current land use is that combination of developed industrial land and undeveloped land zoned. In the county, it was zoned as Business and Office Park District. We anticipate similar zoning as it transitions into the city. We're not requesting and did not get a zoning change when it was approved by the Plan Commission. There are no residences there, so there's no population. The current assessed valuation of the developed portion of the land is $34,578,000. The developer has done some projections on if the undeveloped portion of it were to be developed, it could generate an additional, up to $29 million of additional assessment for that area. A couple core components of the fiscal analysis are analysis of the non-capital and capital expenses. Those were determined to be, for non-capital, approximately $21,200. Those are primarily police coverage, adding some additional patrolling in the area. That was estimated to be about $3,700 a year, and then ongoing street maintenance in that area. Based on the number of miles of streets that are located in primarily the developed section, that was anticipated to be about another $17,500. So the total non-capital costs were estimated to be about $20,200. There are no anticipated non-capital expenses. The developer has full city and sewer and water, and if any additional utility expenses were to be incurred, they would be incurred by the developer. In looking at the potential return to the city based on the assessed valuation, Baker Tilly determined that the annual levy for the, for the developed portion that would be generated by this assessed, level of assessed valuation would be an additional $578,000 a year. So if you take the $20,200, that's, it's going to cost the city, and we're projecting at least $578,000 in new taxes based on what's already developed. We're clearly not having to, we're clearly not having to raise taxes or have a negative fiscal impact from this annexation. If we factor in a similar percentage on the undeveloped, we could see an additional $480,000 a year in assessed levy from that space as well, bringing the total to almost $1 million. I'm happy to address any questions you might have on the rest of the fiscal analysis. I will say also, just in conclusion, by bringing this contiguous portion in, it allows us to continue on with additional contiguous annexations in that corridor to ultimately bring in all of those businesses that have been developed in the county leveraged by access to city water and sewer utilities.
Mishler.
Thank you. Now, is, this is primarily currently zoned commercial, business, and industrial, correct? Is there any residential that's being brought in with this annexation?
No, it's all zoned for commercial and industrial uses. That's correct.
Okay. And this is a voluntary annexation, correct?
That is absolutely correct. The petition, property owners, all voluntarily filed with the city for a voluntary annexation.
Voluntary annexation, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Fish.
Hi, Mike. Does Water and Sewer pass all of this property? Do we have Water and Sewer out to this?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Mr. Hinky.
Property owner is?
There are multiple property owners of the 39 parcels. Mr. Leatherman, Mr. Pete Leatherman, he was the original developer in the space, and he coordinated all of the, all of the varying property owners in the voluntary annexation.
And then the proposed uses in that area?
Will be similar to what you see out there or fall within the zoning, right?
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Huber. I'd like to open it up to the public, if anyone in the audience would like to speak with regards to this resolution. Seeing none, I will turn it back to the council. Council discussion? Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote on this resolution, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Yes.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Would you please read proposed resolution 24-r-12 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 24-r-12, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, adopting a written fiscal plan to define a policy for the provisions of services to the area commonly known as Elkhart East A, northwest corner of County Road 4 and County Road 17, Elkhart, Indiana 46514, a proposed annexation area.
I got a motion in second to adopt this resolution. Got a motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mrs. Heinz. Mr. Huber.
So this is an additional annexation ordinance, fiscal plan ordinance request. This property is actually 114 acres at the northwest corner of County Road 4 and County Road 17. This is a non-contiguous annexation. The statute does allow for non-contiguous annexations for industrial uses. The anticipated uses in this area, it's currently zoned manufacturing, it would be anticipated to be manufacturing as well. It is the same developer voluntarily asking to be annexed. It's Mr. Leatherman and, and his company asking for this as well. And so Mr. Leatherman has some potential developers. The current city policy is that we do not allow for additional extension of utilities or hookups to utilities without annexation or some path to annexation. So as we're annexing the contiguous piece to allow us to build and get to this space, we made the determination to allow the development to continue to happen, to bring this in as a non-contiguous at the same time. The fiscal analysis in this one, this is almost exclusively currently vacant land, so there's very little, very little cost associated with this. I think it's a total of about $4,000. Again, primarily in some street and road repairs and $700 for additional police. And then this one, because it's, it's all vacant, it actually does have a negative net cash flow based on what the, the $300 of new taxes this would bring in. However, given the potential projected build-out based on the current assessed values that the developer provided, the, the development that could, that could occur there would eventually bring in up to or more than another half million dollars a year into the city based on that development. So again, the staff has worked hard with the developer. We clearly think that there's additional demand for development in this area, and we do think it's in the city's best interest. We are amenable to working with the developer to allow him to take on the cost of extending the utilities to provide to those potential users.
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Huber. Is anyone in the audience who'd like to speak with regards to this resolution? Seeing none, we'll turn it back to council. Council questions? Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote on this resolution, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Would you read vacation hearing, alley vacation petition 24-v-01, please?
Alley vacation petition, 24-v-01, an alley vacation petition requesting that the north-south alley located between lots four, between four lots be vacated. Petitioner is Ruth Mear Foundation.
All right. I'll open up the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak with regards to this, this alley vacation? Does anyone like to speak? Is there anyone? Seeing none, we'll close the vacation hearing. Thank you, Angie. Other new business? Other new business from council members? Mr. Hinky.
Well, as much as none of us like to be detoured and rerouted, I must say, getting some of these difficult roads that have been waiting for years to be repaired is finally underway, Johnson Street being one. I do have questions, however, that I would ask maybe Mr. Tracy to get back to us. The question would be, the railroad crossings, was the repairs of those private railroad crossings, if that was grant money or taxpayer money from local? I would be interested in that. Also, I know probably by timing that the mayor had the street crew do Johnson Street, and just to expedite the process in total and use a lot of overtime accordingly. And we would just like, I would just like to have a comparison of private and what length of time that would have had, comparison to in-house as it was done, although I've traveled it and it looks great, seems to wear great. So there's that. I'm just looking at the cost for future use, mainly the railroad in three locations. Who is paying for that upgrade?
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. Yes, I just also want to commend Streets and Central Garage and everyone involved in the Johnson Street Marathon, getting that taken care of, as well as the folks at 311. Last week, I had a request for an alleyway to get checked out between Marine Avenue and Orchard Street off Johnson, and within two to three days, they had already gone out, checked it out, and regraded it, filled a bunch of potholes, so I want to thank everyone involved in that as well.
Other business? Seeing none, I'd like to echo that, I mean, the entire city for the work that's been done. As you know, northern Indiana, it's not spring, but it's, it's not spring unless there are orange cones out blocking every street and making your travel somewhat challenging, but that's, that's what progress looks like, and I want to commend everybody for doing that, especially the railroad crossings. I think I receive more complaints about them than anything. And I know that the one over by Ninth Grade Division of Elkhart High School is going to be paved, it just won't be paved probably until after school starts, so that's coming as well. So progress looks like orange cones. Also, I had the opportunity to go to City Nation's Place in Houston with the Elkhart Conventionist Visitors Bureau and Elkhart Community Foundation to meet with other cities throughout the United States and Canada and Mexico for that matter, and we rank right up there with some of the best. We're one of the things we're planning as far as moving forward with our future and do it, doing our public-private partnerships, as we've talked about. doing our public-private partnerships as we've talked about and utilizing funds to maximize our return, so I want to say that Elkhart is sitting well. Okay, reports of Mayor Board of Works, Board of Safety, City Department heads? There are none. Neighborhood associations, I know the Pierre Moran Neighborhood Association had a cleanup.
Yes, we did.
You want to talk about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to report for the Pierre Moran Neighborhood Association. We had our annual cleanup and it went well. We were thankful for the council people that came by to visit with us and help us clean up a little bit and we want to thank the people that came out, you know, Dr. Troy and his wife Becky, they work hard in our neighborhood, they're very concerned about the land that is in back of their home, that's between us and Woodland Crossing slash Pierre Moran Mall, and we, they cleaned all that up. We had a couple teenagers help clean that up. We reached out to some seniors and worked around their house to make it look a little nicer and trimmed the bushes, trimmed the lawns and stuff. And we also had one trailer last year, we had two trailers from the city, and people could bring their junk that they wanted to get rid of from their home, and both of them were running over. We had a lot of stuff, but it's good to get that junk out of the neighborhood and people clean up around their homes. So all in all, it was a good effort and maybe we need three trailers next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Okay, privilege of the floor, is anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything regarding Elkhart City business? Now's your turn. State your name and address, if you would.
Hello, council. My name is Elena Cooper and my address is thirteen twenty-one Greenleaf Boulevard. I have a few handouts for you all. Like I said previously, my name is Elena Cooper and I'm a senior at Elkhart High School this year. For the past two years, I and other E H S students have banded together to draft a resolution to ensure a healthier, more sustainable future for the city of Elkhart. During this time, we have met with fellow councilmen Mishler, Fish and Holtz, as well as the mayor, to receive input on this resolution. Additionally, we have conversed with environmental experts from both the Elkhart Environmental Center, the Sustainability Office of South Bend, and the mayor's Environmental Advisory Council in Goshen. Our overall goal in passing this resolution is to establish a sustainability commission that includes local businesses, community leaders and environmental experts in our area to encourage more sustainable habits throughout the city. These habits range from small changes like incorporating more recycling bins to larger initiate, to larger initiatives like installing solar panels and other forms of green energy and infrastructure. However, these projects would range widely depending on the kind of climate action plan that the commission would later put into place. We would also like to institute a youth environmental leadership council that would help present data and provide feedback to the commission. In doing so, it will help amplify youth voices, teach students about local issues and help create a solid foundation for students to build sustainable habits. By involving youth in issues that they care most about, you show people like us that our voices and our values are heard. You show us that we have influence and we can build a home that we feel proud of, where we can stay and return to later in life. So I urge you to please seriously consider this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, council. My name is Adianna Shimrana, reside in twenty-four fifteen Royce Avenue, and I am a senior at Elkhart High School. I have been working alongside Elena this year on this resolution and understand that money may be a concern. However, many similar organizations have been entirely voluntary led. Furthermore, the Sustainable Coordinator in South Bend has assured us that there are many grants available under the Inflation Reduction Act that would help us in our future endeavors. Ten different cities in Indiana have passed similar resolutions, including Goshen and South Bend. What we have provided you with you today is merely a first draft of what we believe would best fit our city, but we love and greatly appreciate your input so that we may revise this document according to create the best version possible. Being a senior, Elena and I will be going off to college at the end of this year, and we have made it our goal to pass this resolution by the time that we leave for school in August. Therefore, I urge you all to help us during this revision period and to please seriously consider this document and the benefits that it would provide to the city. We would also love to hear back from you and the council on how we can officially get the resolution presented and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Lorelei England and I currently reside at two-six-seven zero zero Fields Farm Trail. My purpose here today is support their proposal and I'm a sixteen-year-old sophomore at Elkhart High School. And as a teenager who is currently living in Elkhart High School, I am getting increasingly worried about our environment and our surroundings. It is starting to become actively harmful and I feel like having this proposal and a climate action plan would help a huge amount in the future. Even making just small changes would help our environment so much. Specifically in the proposal, they state stuff about how our waterways specifically in Elkhart are contributing to Indiana pollution, and I feel like just making small changes, even just to the pollution we contribute there is a huge change. And I feel like one other thing they propose that to me is very, very important is having education programs, not just for students but for adults. I feel like as a teenager, I've almost learned some, some of these issues way too late and I'm still trying to make those changes I can to reduce my carbon footprint and reduce what I can to contributing to climate change. And I feel like this proposal would make a huge difference, so please take the time to look over this and consider it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out. Is there anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council floor. I'd like to remind everybody that Thursday, six-thirty, the council will be hosting the mayor's State of the City address at the Lerner Crystal Ballroom at six-thirty. Would like to encourage everybody to come and here we have in store for the future of the city of Elkhart. There are no scheduling of committee meetings, acceptance of communications. Move to accept?
Second.
Accept, second by, motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mr. Crabtree. All of the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion for adjournment. And motion by Mr. Heinz, second by Mr. Mishler, all of the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.